For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just have one item. We've had a request to change or to move item 310 up ahead of 31 to accommodate some travel for the presenter here tonight, so we will accommodate that and make that change. Otherwise, that's all I have. Our city manager is out sick tonight, so we'll go to Ropke now.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the beneficial reuse management doing business as Gypsoil LLC.
Declare the public hearing open and ask Myron to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Over the past couple of months, the Port Authority has been working with beneficial reuse management, a Chicago-based company on their Gypsoil project. I first wanted to note a couple of things. On page two of your write-up, there is a typo there or a misspell. I referenced SciTech instead of beneficial reuse on page two of your write-up. I also have included in your amended resolution for your consideration. The changes proposed by legal counsel are highlighted in that resolution. Gypsoil, just for your information, is a soil amendment used in agriculture. Its main benefits is to loosen soil, helps soil retain water, and it helps with sedimentation runoff. So it has several benefits. The facility proposed to be in Winona is relocated at 110 Harvester. Manufacturer would create about 20 jobs over the next two years and at very competitive wage rates, much higher than what the state's minimum wage rates are asking for. It is a roughly $6.5 million project, so they have quite an investment in both Winona and in Minnesota. Most of their engineering, their equipment and all things are Minnesota-based, so a lot of investment in both Winona and the state of Minnesota. Anticipated, if this moves forward, that the project would be operational in late fall of 2015. Tonight, we're asking the city council to consider two actions to move the project forward. The first action would be the approval of the attached resolution, and that allows the Port Authority to proceed with the Minnesota Investment Fund application. This is an application much similar that we did with SciTech, if you recall, last year. It's the same type of an application to the Minnesota Investment Fund in the Department of Employment and Economic Development. The second is a simple resolution to approve $140,000 loan from the Port Authority to beneficial reuse. That loan has been reviewed by the Port Loan Review Committee and the Port Board, and they are recommending approval to the city council. In attendance tonight, we have Ron Thomas and Ryan Thomas and Ron Chamberlain for Beneficial Reuse, and they would have any, they can answer any questions you might have with them. And maybe Ron and Ryan, if we could step up to the podium if they have any questions.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ron Chamberlain.
I don't know if that's turned on or if you just need to speak in. Oh, it's turned on. Okay.
Ryan Thomas, Gypsoil. Office is in 372 West Ontario Street, Chicago, Illinois. Phone number is 317-374-7470.
Do you have a presentation you'd like to make or just answer questions?
Myron asked us to be present to answer any questions that you may or may not have regarding the project, regarding FTEs, regarding our investment in the city of Winona and in the state of Minnesota. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have. We don't have anything formally prepared for you.
All right. Well, I have a question. I guess my understanding that this material is not fly ash. How is this different than fly ash?
I'll go into that a little bit. When coal is burned, typically you'll see smoke coming from the stacks. That is the ash. That is the fly ash. It's very light. It's very small. Particularly, the heavy metals that are in the coal are attached to it. And so when the coal is burned, that ash is removed. It's removed with filter bags and electrostatic precipitators so that the clean gas downstream from that contains just sulfur dioxide, for example, carbon dioxide, the other types of greenhouse gases. At that point, then, they spray a solution of high calcium limestone into that. The calcium limestone reacts with the sulfur dioxide, ultimately making gypsum. So gypsum is a co-product that's produced after the fly ash is removed from the flue gases. And so, obviously, when the fly ash is removed, the metals are removed with it, which is an important factor.
Let me ask one more question before I turn over to council. What kind of dust is created and would be created if you had this operation here in Winona?
A couple of things. Last week, we did a test run, if you will, with our mechanical partner, which is BPex in the Twin Cities. And they were actually a little bit surprised by the lack of dust production. They thought that their baghouse bags were not working, so they stopped the trial and made sure that they were actually functioning, which they were. So to quantify correctly and to substantiate what we're doing, we've hired a couple of different firms here, actually in the Twin Cities in Minnesota, to analyze the equipment that we're using that's being produced by BPex and to make an application to understand, I think they call it a determination of applicability, to determine whether or not we are going to need an air permit. It's our opinion and it's the manufacturer of the equipment's opinion that we will not need an air permit, but we would rather cross that bridge now and find out if we do on the front end of the project rather than the middle. Primarily because air permits can be a little bit lengthy in the time that it takes to obtain it. So we would rather get a very firm answer to that now as opposed to later.
Okay. Other questions? Pam?
I understand the gypsum, the raw material comes in by barge.
Yes.
Okay. And then you'll transport it across the railroad tracks around the end and get it to the facility.
Correct.
Will those trucks be closed trucks or are they open trucks?
They should be closed trucks. This process is very moisture sensitive. So when we bring in our material from our terminal at the port, they'll be in closed triaxals or in dump semis. They'll have tarps on the top primarily because we don't want the fugitive dust emission, and also we don't want to subject it if it happens to be raining to any more moisture because it can really throw off the process when we try and produce pellets. So we're anticipating somewhere around seven or eight trucks a day into the plant, bringing in raw material, and then seven or eight trucks at the end of the day taking out finished products.
I might add that the material coming in will be somewhere between eight and probably 15% moisture, which for agriculture is very important for not only handling but also for spreading the material. I might add that I began working with gypsum and established the Gypsoil brand 14 years ago, and it's very important that this moisture be right and we're going to work well in agriculture as far as application. And so that's the type of material that we'll be bringing in.
I have another. Let's see. I understand that this flue gas desulfurized gypsum comes from coal-fired power plants. What do you project is the future of this since coal-fired plants are, more and more of them are shifting to natural gas?
That's an excellent question. The Electric Power Research Institute is part of the American Coal Ash Association. They're predicting that the availability and quantity of FGD gypsum is actually going to continue to increase. Now, the reason that is, obviously, it's more efficient in some cases to burn natural gas than coal, but the coal-fired power plants that are coming out of production are those that are very old, very inefficient, and it just does not justify adding that type of expense. It's several tens of millions of dollars to a billion dollars to do that. So typically, the plants that are coming out of production are the older ones, the smaller, maybe 200 to 400 megawatt plants. However, today, we're continuing to have new plants built, and those are in the range of 3,000 megawatts. So we may be losing several plants from the total production, but the actual output in wattage and the amount of gypsum being produced, they are predicting will continue to increase. I might add as well that they obviously are spread out across much of the Midwest and the East, somewhat in the West. And so we, as a company, have established a regional distribution system that will allow us to bring material from existing plants great distances to Winona, for example, for this project.
So you anticipate you'll be at this, you would be at this facility for more than five years?
Absolutely. Yes. Yes. I might add that there are actually two large markets for this material that are potential, and that is agriculture but also turtle ornamental within the United States. So there's a demand that's growing within the agricultural business because it's important to have this material available to blend with other fertilizer materials in smaller quantities using the equipment that's available within the communities today. And so the demand potential is there and will be for the long term.
Thank you.
Michelle?
I'm just wondering if you can explain a little bit about the runoff aspect of this. I know that in the state of Minnesota and the federal government is worried about the dead zone in the Gulf, and they're looking at states that live along riverways to have, you know, the sulfur and nitrate levels down. And I know most fertilizers cause this problem runoff on farms, so I'm wondering how this is comparable. Is it a better product? Is there some way that takes some of that sulfate out of the water as it runs back down into the valley?
Excellent question. Well, the material will be kept on property here where we're producing it. But once it's applied to the fields, it's a unique chemistry. It's calcium sulfate. And not to get into a lot of real detail, but it's a very reactive material. And fortunately, the sulfate and calcium both can move down through the soil profile. There's a chemical reaction taking place with the soil that causes it to aggregate or come into little bundles so that water can move through. The calcium portion of this is also a very strong cation, and so it will bind with soluble reactive phosphorus, which is that phosphorus is creating the algae blooms. Primarily, phosphorus and nitrates are what create the algae blooms. So gypsum, in fact, is one that will reduce that. We have research going on now. We're showing a 62% reduction in concentration of soluble reactive phosphorus using gypsum in that situation. So as watersheds become more and more monable, as we see more and more need for preventing that material, those materials from getting into the water, the calcium sulfate will play a large role. So, and as soil structure improves and the soil biology is very efficient in this, like a good garden, for example, they too will tend to bind and balance those nutrients. So this will play a large role. I might mention that the National NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service, is today implementing, putting together a new conservation practice standard, a national standard for gypsum, to support farmers in using gypsum for improving soils, also for mediating the phosphorus that's in the environment, but also to reduce the problems in the offsite movement and manure in agricultural applications. So there's several things that the federal government sees that gypsum is really helpful for because of the chemistry that they want to promote that as a good conservation practice.
Thank you.
Mel?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you and your company for looking at Winona and then finally selecting Winona. Councilman Borzakowski and I represent the council on the Port Authority, so we've been aware of this program through city staff and our meetings from the last few years. I do have a question, though, about the process, and I'm glad you're here to explain it because I think, you know, we've done our research. We've looked at your company's video. There's been other research out there that, you know, says, hey, wait a minute, there's, you know, something going on here, but it's mainly focused on drywall made out of this particular product from the power plants. And that's something that your company is not proposing to do at this place, at this site?
That is correct. We are proposing to bring a raw FGD gypsum and flue gas desulfurization co-product here and pelletizing it for this purpose. Now, wallboard is also calcium sulfate gypsum, and it has many other ingredients in it, obviously, to make a wallboard. One of the things that can be problematic with FGD gypsum is if you put it in an anaerobic environment where it's moist all the time and does not have oxygen, then the anaerobic bacteria begin to produce hydrogen sulfide, which creates the problems. And then unfortunately, they had low-grade wallboard that was brought into the USR chief, and those problems ensue because of the environment that they put it in. So the chemistry is calcium sulfate dihydrate. How you handle it and how you deal with it determine what it will do in the environment.
Very good. Where is this product? Where do you anticipate distributing the product, assuming everything goes forward here, from the facility you'll be creating in Winona?
Right now, we're anticipating, we have two lines that are, that'll be able to produce gypsum or be able to produce pellets. Each line will produce around 34,000 to 35,000 tons a year. So in year one, the first full year of production, we should produce around 35,000 tons of gypsum pellets. CHS here in Winona has, we have not executed a contract with them to date, but they have expressed interest in taking all 35,000 tons basically as fast as we can produce it.
Great. And another question. How many new jobs would you be creating?
Each line carries with it 10 FTEs. So we'll be looking at when line one, line one comes online, it'll be immediately 10. And then when line two comes on, approximately six to nine months later, it'll be an additional 10. So we're looking at 20 total.
And what's the average wage paid to those employees? A range is fine?
You know, it's been represented to us that the lowest wage would be a $15 cash wage with approximately $7 to $7.50 per hour in benefits.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Do you have similar plants in other cities like what you're proposing here in Winona?
We don't. The, from a bulk gypsum standpoint, we market and sell bulk gypsum in 26.
21 states.
21 states.
We're permitted in 26 states.
And we're permitted in 26 states. We have four or five other permits pending that have not been approved yet. But so all in all, we're in and operating in some capacity in approximately 30 states. Pellets are a unique form of gypsum. There are only a couple other plants nationwide that do this, and this is the first one that we've done, proposing here in Winona. Assuming that this one goes well, which we have every reason to believe that it will, we're going to replicate this process with three or four other plants elsewhere depending on what other market demands.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wish to speak to this topic? State your name and address.
Lynette Power, 252 East 8th Street. I'm an artist. I use gypsum for mold making. I'm very familiar with gypsum. This is natural gypsum that I have always used. The gypsum that we're talking about tonight is synthetic gypsum. And like they were saying, you know, like everybody's understanding, this is being used for more and more things and trying to replace some of the mining. So in some places, it's considered more green than natural gypsum. However, with all these, you know, mercury and all the contaminants in it, the lead, arsenic, and other heavy metals, there is other issues with that. And they did address that thing about the wallboard, and as they were saying, there's something about the bacteria or something. The, in the wallboard, the hydrogen sulfide is one of the things that is the destructive thing that offgasses from that wallboard. And is it true, then, that your plant will not be, there will be none of that hydrogen sulfide produced? I mean, as your, as your pile, stockpiles offgass?
Yeah, that's true there. Well, we will be storing our material in an environment where it's not waterlogged. Again, like I mentioned before, calcium sulfate, when it comes in contact with an anaerobic environment, with anaerobic bacteria that are within that environment.
Anaerobic meaning?
Means that they get their oxygen in a watered environment. So if it's a soil, let's say a soil that's waterlogged for a long, long time, you can even smell, smoke gas smells from that. That's hydrogen sulfide. You can live things coming off. The anaerobic bacteria need to have oxygen. The aerobic bacteria need to have oxygen. Aerobic bacteria get theirs from the oxygen in the soil, in the environment. But when there is no oxygen and it's waterlogged, then those stop, the anaerobic bacteria's populations come up and they take their oxygen from the compounds like sulfate, for example. They'll take the oxygen from the sulfate to live and create hydrogen sulfide, which is a gas and it goes off. So hydrogen sulfide has to be produced by the anaerobic bacteria in order for that to be an issue with calcium sulfate.
So your stockpiles will always be kept dry?
Absolutely.
Or, you said there's moisture in them?
That's correct. There's probably eight to 10% of moisture in what we, here live.
Getting kind of a side conversation going on, and I think Lynette needs to address the council, and maybe you could then answer some questions she raises at the podium. I'm sorry.
The thing about the hydrogen sulfide is it's extremely corrosive. I mean, people who've had this in their houses, their computers don't work, their wiring doesn't work. It's, what the Consumer Product Safety Commission advises homeowners who discover their houses contain toxic drywall to remove the drywall and replace fire safety equipment and many electrical components. So my big concern is, okay, we've got a little gem of our marine art museum sitting right next to where this whole facility is going to go. What is this going to do? I mean, if there are those kinds of offgassing issues, which, you know, we need to be assured that that is not going to be any kind of offgassing of that kind of corrosive materials in order to, you know, protect our neighborhood there. So that's one of my, one of my concerns. And then the other concern is that about a year ago, it came to my awareness that the rice is, we're being advised that there is so much arsenic in the rice crops that we should be cutting back on the consumption of rice unless they're from organic sources. And some of this research I have looked into has pointed to fields that in the South where they are putting, you know, I don't know if it's fly ash, I don't know if it's these gypsum products, sewage sludge and things like that. So I just want to be assured that we also are looking at what kind of, we do not want to be having excess arsenic and lead and mercury. And there also have been with this gypsum use on land, has been higher concentrations of, I think it was mercury. So I'm just, I'm just really concerned that we look at that carefully. Now, all the, it looks like a lot of the information that we've gotten here to make this decision is coming from the industry. We have a fantastic scientific community here in our, in our Winona, and with the two universities and their environmental studies, and then there's a lot of scientific people in town that we could get second opinions from. And just, there's also some fantastic resources up in St. Paul, Minneapolis, that are working with watersheds and farm practices as well as the land stewardship people. And I just would like to just not move this thing forward really quickly, but consult with some of those people and make sure that we are not going to be promoting the use of something on our lands that is going to be detrimental in the long run.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
I appreciate her concerns. These are very good, real concerns. I'd like to address those. First of all, the natural gypsum that we're using today from mines comes from the ground, and it has many, many impurities, things that are not calcium sulfate. It runs anywhere from 85% to maybe 90% pure. And so there are a lot of things in that gypsum beyond, besides calcium sulfate. And unfortunately, there are also, metals are some of those components. The FGD gypsum we're speaking of runs 90 to 98% pure. Fortunately, the ash that contains the metals attached to it is removed prior to the gypsum's production. So gypsum is a regulated product. It's been permitted in each state, like many things. And in most of the states, we're required to take analytical tests, some monthly, some quarterly, some states it's annually. So since 2006, when I began first using gypsum, FGD gypsum, we have hundreds and hundreds of analytics to show us what is in it. And essentially, compared to the EPA allowable amounts of these rector metals, the eight most concerning those, they're either non-detectable in the FGD gypsum or they're at 1 to 4% of what's allowed. So many times, there's less metal content in this than there actually is in the mine material. Also, we're working with a gentleman by the name of Tim Hagan with the University of Minnesota in preparing for this pelletizing product. The process that we're using is some of his work. And so we are involved with the state university with the material. So the metals are not there. The hydrogen sulfide, again, is also not there until it is put in the wrong kind of an environment and it's created by a chemical reaction.
I wanted to address the moisture issue. When gypsum carries with it 8 to 12% moisture, which is what we indicated that we would prefer when it comes into our facility, 8 to 12%, if you had a pile sitting here, you couldn't make a snowball out of it, just to give you a frame of reference. 8 to 12% is not very moist. So with regard to how we're going to store the material, once we bring the material over from the port to our facility, there is a three-sided area to the area that we're going to lease, that we're going to end up closing in so that we'll have it 100% enclosed all the time. We like to protect the asset that we have in the form of the gypsum and control that moisture content because if it gets upwards of 20, 22, 25%, well, when we bring it inside, we have to heat it and bring that moisture content back down in order to produce the pellets that we're trying to produce. So that's an extremely important issue to us as far as the moisture content, which is why we've elected to close off that extra building and make sure that when we bring in 3, 4, or 5,000 tons at a time, that it can be contained completely.
You say this material is regulated. Do they regulate the amount of this material that the farmers put on their land?
Most states do, yes. We, when we apply for a permit, some states have a level of maximum amount that you can apply. We, in all of our permits, we state the amount that we want to apply based off of the agronomic need for the field. But typically, in most states, the maximum amount that can be applied is three tons per acre, similar to a limestone material. And that's in the case of where we are removing sodium from sodium soils. Most of our usage with the bulk material is somewhere around 2,000 pounds per acre. Now, the pelletized material that we're speaking of here, the use rate of it will be significantly lower than that simply because the cost per unit is significantly higher. It will primarily be being used as a sulfur source, calcium source, nutrient source as a pellet. The bulk source that we're using is a change source, chemical cell structure. The bulk source that we're using is a change source, chemical cell structure to mend soils, and that's at a much higher rate. So like I said, the destination of this material will be at a much lower rate per acre. The metals concentrations, again, are either non-detectable, or they're at the low end of the allowable amount by the EPA. And the hydrogen sulfide production will not happen unless this is put into an anaerobic environment. An anaerobic environment would be one that if we put gypsum in that pitcher there and fill it up with water, so that all the gypsum was underwater, that's an anaerobic environment. And obviously, we're not gonna allow that to happen.
Does Minnesota, is Minnesota one of those states that regulates it?
Yes. The, the federal EPA requires the states to have some sort of a regulation permitting process, either to be exempted or to be permitted at certain levels. So the states choose their own criteria and so on for permitting. So obviously, that's the first thing we do when we wanna sell gypsum in the state, is to get to permitted places.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak? Anybody else wish to speak? Last chance, anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I ask the council if there's.
I'm moving to approve.
Uh, there's two other recommendations?
Two resolutions, I believe.
Do the motions need to be made separately, or can we do them together?
Just to clarify, the first item for the MIF application is a resolution. It's the revised resolution that we distributed. The second action would be a motion to approve the port loan of a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
You want them separately?
Together is fine.
I'll move approval of both.
Okay.
I'd second.
Motion by Paul, and seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? George?
Yeah, just, and Mitch, I think what Ms. Powers brought up as far as, you know, questions and concerns with it, I think they were answered, I think relatively well documented by the, the people from GIPSoil and dealing with them through the Port Authority. They're, they're a good company and I think everything from here will go forward. And if anything ever does come up while the process is going during your business, I know I'm certain that you will address whatever concern would come along the way, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Under the petitions, requests and communications, we are moving to item three point ten. This is a request for the Winona International and Sprint Triathlon, known as Trinona. And the council was, and maybe I believe, were emailed additional maps to go along with that agreement.
I'd move to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Well, it's a great event. We appreciate all the people you bring to our community for it. So, thank you. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries. Have a good drive home.
And now we will move back to item three point one, a reappointment to the Board of Adjustment of David Kuba.
Move to approve that appointment.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Carries, we have one enthusiasm.
Item three point two, appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Susan Briggs.
I would move to confirm the appointment.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I know Susan has served in the past and will be a good member again, so. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign.
Item three point three, request for St. Martin's Strawberry Festival in Sinclair Park on Sunday, June fourteenth.
I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Al?
Just a comment, it's a great event. Certainly, I support this again and hope everybody attends. My grandchildren had a great time last year.
Hope for good weather.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Passes.
Item three point four, request by Winona Health to close Parks Avenue for their Scrubs Camp on Thursday, June twenty-fifth.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item three point five, a request by Winona Health for their race to summer five K event on Saturday, May sixteenth.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? None. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, motion carries.
Item three point six, is a request for the Winona Main Street Touch a Truck and Play Streets events on Saturday, May sixteenth. And David Bitner is here, if you have questions.
I'd move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Great event, very successful last year. If nothing else, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item three point seven, is a request for Winona Senior High School's Global Trot on Saturday, May ninth.
Move to approve that request.
I'll second.
Motion by George, seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item three point eight, is a request for the Hiwatha Valley Mental Health Center five K signage at Lake Park and Central Park.
I'd move to approve.
Motion by Pam, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item three point nine, is a request for a handicap stall at the Winona State Retirement Center at two twenty-seven West Wabashaw.
Move to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Under new business, item five point one is the MPCA grant opportunity for Rain Garden Demonstration Project at the parking lot at one-ten Johnson Street.
I'd move the resolution to authorize applying for the funds. I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam.
One question. Did we lose any parking spaces?
No. I don't think so.
No, we would not lose any parking spaces. There, there's sufficient room in there to put a rain garden, kind of between the roads.
Personally, I think it's a great project and I'd like to encourage more of this sort of thing. I'm glad that the co-op is willing to take this on and apply and, and maintain it successful.
Yeah, I have a question about it. Where in the parking lot would it be? I don't see any outline on our graphic here in our packet.
Yeah, basically, if you, as you look in the packet where you see the cars parking facing one another, we would just open up, open up that space between those cars that are facing one another and it would be down the middle of that lot.
Oh, so it's not a square, but it's more of a long elongated rectangle?
A long rectangle.
In the middle of it? Okay. And what do you mean by regrading and resurfacing?
Well, basically, what, what's required is, is they would have to regrade that lot to direct the storm waters to the, to the rain garden. I'm sure if you've seen the, the water standing in that parking lot in the past, it, it's certainly an issue, both by standing water and ice buildup really in that lot. So, and it does end up, I think, in the basement of the hall as well. So there's a lot of, there are kind of ongoing water issues with regard to that. That's a large, impervious surface there.
Would this affect snowplowing at all?
Uh, not to my knowledge. He's shaking his head, no.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item five point two, is a contract with the City of Winona Professional Employees Association. This would be for a two and a half percent wage increase effective January first.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Seconded by Paul, seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. Oh, George.
Yeah, two and a half. Were there other ones? We just did, was that two and a half, or is that two? All two and a half, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item five point three, requesting support for dedicated state funding for city streets.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Michelle?
Can someone answer how we would be recommending they find the funding? Are we encouraging them? It said tolls, but I'm not really sure what that means. Is this just asking them to consider additional funding for city streets, or are we actually encouraging them to tax us to get the additional? I'm trying to understand where the money's coming from. Anybody know? I see that Judy. Okay.
I think right now, as part of it is the fact that they have a, a surplus and, and they're trying to send it in different directions and it's tended to look at streets as a priority, as opposed to some other possible uses.
I believe you're right about that. Any other, all right, other questions that can or can't be answered?
I mean, I wanna improve more streets. I just, the way it's written, it sounds like we want to put a toll on our local streets and I just am not in favor of that, so.
If there are any other questions, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item five point four, future of Lake Park softball fields.
Councilman Craig?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borzakowski and I requested this, just really, we don't have any specific plans, but it's really to officially get it on the agenda. Since Winona State withdrew their plans, that evening, there was suggestion and pretty much consensus all the way across about, you know, okay, staff, let's come back with something. And then another time during council concerns, I think two or three people had suggested, there's been suggestions. And since its spring is just around the corner and people are starting to talk about things like that, both of us, and I'm sure a lot of the rest of you, have been getting some questions about it. So chatting with the city manager, we just thought, let's put it on the agenda, so it's officially out there. I do understand that staff is working on some ideas. So what the plan is, we don't have any specifics yet, but staff is gonna be looking, is looking at it. And as my understanding, staff will be coming back to us with suggestions on what to do with the existing parks, how to get them up to speed, repairing them kind of, and what the cost will be, et cetera, et cetera. So tonight was nothing more than just letting the public know that things are being looked at and things will be brought back to us to decide on what's going to take place with those parks. If we ought to recall, all the discussion around the Winona State concept, the one thing that the vast majority of people agreed upon is the existing ball diamonds that repair needs to be done to them. So that's all we're doing, is gonna be working on what everyone or the vast majority of people agreed upon. So that's, it's pretty much it.
Yeah, like I say, I pretty much agree. Jerry pretty much summed everything up. And, you know, the players are asking that there's money that they've been paying for years and the sponsors and the softball development fund. The time has come now to look at those fields, see the future, see if we even need all four fields that they're looking at as far as renovation to, you know, get something done with it. They wanna start seeing money spent on those fields, so.
Well, I don't want people to go, we're not talking about reduction of fields.
No, no, no.
But let's just get that out there. I think we need all the fields that we have. But still, we're just requesting a staff. Instead of up to this point, it's been suggestions, but now that the big plan is off the table, let's come back with a plan that we can work on with a timeline and with a price tag. So then, once staff comes up with some general ideas, then we then can have the discussion with the constituents and then put our input into it, so we can finally get something concrete.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, we'll bring this topic up again at another time.
Moving on to item five point five, it's the BK final plant.
I would move the attached resolution to be introduced for adoption.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Carries.
Item seven point one, is council concerns.
Start with Al.
Um, just extending, I'm sure the council's sympathy and, and those of the community to Mayor Peterson on the passing of his mother in Mankato. That's all I have.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Paul?
I, I would also agree with that. I had an opportunity last week to hit, there was Seven Rivers. I had a meeting on economic growth in the area, in La Crosse. And one of the highlights of that meeting was to basically say there's a lot of river communities, including La Crosse, who are having similar situations with aging population. I think in some cases, they looked at within the next five years, fifty percent of, of certain companies' entire workforce would be retiring. And I think probably of the, uh, most important thing is out of there, Dubuque, Iowa had a similar situation and they had an excellent model that they presented. And, and I think that we should clearly look at replicating what Dubuque did. It's a good strategy for, to, to solve the problem. And, and it seems to be very cost-effective in what they're doing. And it's a multi-level where they identify people who might wanna relocate to the area. They make sure that those people have an, an understanding of the benefits of the area, what it has to offer them. And, and also, they recognize the fact that they had probably one of, I think, the oldest population in Iowa from an age standpoint. So, so it, it clearly highlighted those facts and was an excellent seminar.
Thank you. Pam?
Nothing, thank you.
George?
Condolences to your family in the passing. She appeared to be a very wonderful lady from hearing stories that you were telling us, so. This past week, the mayor and the press, we talked about, or they talked about, you know, the blockage of the railroad crossings, preferably Mankato and Louisa Street, different areas in town too. And I appreciate that very much, people are talking about that. But also, I'd like to see, I've left Judy a message, and of course, as I say, her being ill, she was unable to return it, is I would like to see a resolution, if that's the right word to use, to come to the council where the council simply addresses blocked crossings and send it to the railroad. I know we have sent some things to them and to Mindot, but to just simply address the blocked crossings. And what I mean by blocked crossings, not those that are barricaded and closed off, just to train crossings where the railroad themselves are taking up multiple, multiple time in order to, you know, do their switching. Today, I know it was blocked for about forty minutes. Again, there was traffic all the way backed up damn near to Broadway. So it is an issue and I know, like I say, during, during last fall's campaign, I know I addressed it, as did many other candidates addressed it. And I know next year, in next year's election, I'm sure it's gonna be a front-running issue will be coming up again, so. Thank you for the help on that. As we know, our snowmobilers, every year, we tend to have many accidents where people are seriously hurt, if not killed. And I would like to congratulate former Winona, former retired Winona Fire Captain Kim Bartleson on being named the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Snowmobile Safety Instructor for the Year. A great honor. Kim, with his training as a firefighter, I know he would, you know, he put on very, very good classes with this, bringing out what to expect and how we can operate them safely. An honor very, very much deserving to Kim. I'd like to send out congratulations to Al and Peggy Joswick on celebrating forty years of marriage. Time really flies. And I'd like to send out good wishes of good health to Frank Dreskowsky and Sylvia Palbicki. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that one you shouldn't have any problem with.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of minutes from the February 17th agenda and a final adoption of an ordinance to declare a parcel on Lake Boulevard as surplus property.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Al, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.